Number four, our board reports, which I handed out at the workshop. And just as a reminder, the consent agenda was moved by Vice President Willbeck, and it was seconded by Trustee Cruden. So we just have a few to finish up on the consent.
Are there any questions on the Board Secretaries of the Board or the Superintendent of the Board? Not on this table.
Next up is Claims and Accounts. We took the draft off the resolution. These are our final numbers. Oh, I'm sorry. Going back to number two, Communications. There's one last resignation that you're unaware of. It wasn't in your last packets that were sent home, so.
It's like there's more than a... This was this much, and now you have just one. There's like three more.
I see. Sarah. No, it might be just the way they... the lines went down, but actually...
No, he did addition.
Rush Line?
Yeah. He's not on the original line.
Is not on the one you had at home, right? I think it's just that one.
Rush Line.
Right? Is that when you counted? All right. That'll take us to Resolution 13. And this was Personnel to Community Ed. I had handed it out at the workshop. And we decided to wait till tonight.
What number did you?
Thirteen, yes.
Actually, what's on there is one of your two things, I think?
Yeah, like I said, that's why we had changed... we didn't vote on it last week. It was a correction made to the resolution, which is the one that's in front of me. Thirteen. Brings us to 21. The only thing different from 21, we took the draft off the resolution. The appropriation transfers are exactly the same. There have been no changes since the workshop. So we took the draft off that front resolution. Twenty-one. If you give me a second. Your packets only had the resolution, but this has a complete backup, just in case we get any questions from the audience. Not in...
Yeah, I have. Yep.
Confusing.
Oh, you want 21?
You already had the backup.
Yes.
Okay. So that will take on... Take us to number 58. Now, we have a couple of add-ons with placement of handicapped pupils. Our 58 is the first one. It's the Horizon High School, Saroval Paulsy of New Jersey, one student. It's the start of July 5th. And you'll see a breakdown of tuition in extraordinary service.
Can we look at number 19?
Sure we can. If everybody could turn back to 19. Uh...
Is this a question?
So is this for the summer?
It's just where it says extended school route, where it has ESY. Those are the only ones for the summer. The others are renewals for September. The extended school year routes total about $84,573.63.
Yeah, so for the extended school year, we can't use our buses for that? Because what are we using the buses for?
We utilize them during... here too, but they... they could be... We would be sending a 54-passenger bus maybe to the school for the blind with one student. These are bids that went out. We could certainly look into that, or I could look into renting smaller vehicles maybe to bring this cost down. We've talked about that in the past.
Yeah, because I thought we had the like 21 buses, so.
We do.
We do, but to put one person on a bus that sits 47 people with an aide to get them to one place, and most of these extended school placements, they start at the same time, so you might be going to Ho-Ho-Kiss, and then Motville, and Rest Orange, and...
Hackensack, for example, Hackensack has three people. And then, what do you call it? All the other ones have two on top of them, and then... Where's the... where's it? Vanwood has four.
Also, the city utilizes our buses during the summer for things throughout the city, the camps. Dr. McGinn?
Yes, right.
We're talking about here. Vanwood has four, times 8,700. And then after that, you have Hackensack has three, times 5,500.
I mean, we certainly can look at that, but the buses are utilized more than what you think. First of all, HUD uses the buses during the summer. The city uses the buses. We also have a program at Woodrow Wilson and Lincoln School, plus... You know, so it's not that all these buses are not being used. And also, I just want to add that many of our drivers take vacation, you know, during that time, too. So we don't want them to have vacation during the school year, because we need them more than ever. But we can look at that.
Yeah, because it's... we have 21. How many buses do they... all the other programs use?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I'm telling you that we do use quite a few of them. And we don't usually use HUD during the day, because that's a program that's after school. We don't... very often, we lend buses to the city for the programs that they have. But Mr. Smith, I think you can look at that.
Absolutely. We'll take a look at it and see if there's... if some of the destinations are close to each other. But if you're going to Mountain Lakes, and then you're going to New Providence, and then Hackensack, we'll take a look at it, Trustee.
Okay. So can we table this one?
No. These are...
They started.
They started.
Well, what about the September ones? Then we could take that off, the other ones, and then see what we're going to do, because I think that was brought up.
Well, in September, we'll be utilizing our own buses for our own in-district students.
Yeah, no, but that was in the conversation, that we're going to figure out other ways that we can save money. And if we could look at it, we have till September, or we have till next month. So can we break you into two?
I have a quick question on that as well. You mentioned HUD. Yes. And the City of Bayonne. Is the Board of Education compensated in any way for the use of our buses? For HUD, they are. What's the compensation rate? I'm not sure, Mr. Smith. Do you have that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Compensation rate. We bill HUD. Every three months, we send them accordingly, bill for payroll purposes, because their payroll is generated through the Board of Ed and anything that they might use.
And the transportation portion of it, the repair department, we actually bill them in bulk. I want to say for last year, it was a little... maybe just under $10,000, I think, in total for the year that they, through that program, reimbursed the Board of Education for transportation solely for the after-school program.
Well, if it seems to me, if one looks at the figures, if we're being compensated $10,000 a year, and we're looking at the extended school year, and you're looking at the cost of it, and we're using our buses, $10,000 for the entire year doesn't even come close to what is costing the...
But they're only using... I think they use one bus.
Two different... yeah.
Two different routes, maybe daily.
After-school.
After-school program, it's like two hours where they pick up and they drop off from the school back to the housing areas.
Well, we understand that transportation is a huge, huge expense for this district, and we're just looking for ways to perhaps reduce the expense. So I mean, we're only getting paid...
We had gone so far as to inquire about hiring per diem drivers, remember, Mr. Clark? For small vans to do some of these routes, where we would pay a senior citizen, maybe a retiree with a clean driving record, $15 a run. And we were stopped by doing that because it was a union concern.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you contract them?
Not a contract.
Yeah, if you do a contract with them, then you wouldn't be covered by...
We do a contract with a qualified company, yeah. Which is what we do. It's a lot of our cash. But it's not cheap. Some of these companies are quite expensive.
So it's possible for us to do just the ESY people tonight?
Yes. That's what we're doing. We're taking the ESY summer portion of that resolution. We're going to pull that out with the 80, $2,000 and change total, and we'll do that resolution. And we'll replace it. Okay? All right, so I'm going to go back to 79, placement of handicapped pupil, Bergen Center. It's the start of July 1st, the one student.
Mr. Smith, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I know we signed an interlocal with the city for the buses for the camp that they use for the summer. How much... does the Board get compensation for the city using our buses?
It's really like with the interlocal, Mitch, you want to explain the nuances of the interlocal. We use the stadium for football, baseball. It's various different trade-offs.
Okay.
We're not compensated per se monetarily by the city, but they do supply other things.
Right, it's a reciprocal shared services.
Is there any way to work that garbage contract into the interlocal?
Reciprocal shared service.
Should be, yeah.
Because that's what I'm thinking about when I hear the city using anything that we're paying for the garbage.
Yeah, we do utilize Veterans Stadium, though, for them. We had Beautiful Graduation down there the other day. They did not charge us for utilizing the field for baseball, softball, football, soccer, boys and girls. So Gorman Field, we don't get a...
It's funded by taxpayer funds. They're not doing this a favor.
I know that.
Go ahead. Okay, fine. All right, thank you.
That's the interlocals that we all signed off on.
Next up, Resolution 80, is our monthly resolution to various positions. You'll see as-dated food service, substitute teacher. And a substitute teacher aid.
Do we still have people on the rolls as needed from last year? Are these all...
There is a pool, right, Ken?
Yeah.
There's a pool of employees, subs, and all the different various positions.
As substitute teachers, we never stop hiring or recruiting due to the fact that we have such a hard time filling spots, especially during difficult times, holidays, and some areas where every year there's excessive absences. So we probably could never get enough substitute teachers. That's why we're continually building them.
How large is the pool now? Do you have any idea? My question basically is, are all these brand-new subs that are added to our sub list?
Correct. Both of them are just looking through our college students who finished up in May, came in, interviewed. They now have over 60 credits, have a substitute certificate. They're eligible to sub only when they're off from school. Some of them are off only on Friday, some of them go away, and then when they come back during their breaks, they are a help to us, because, you know, that usually falls right in the holiday season.
And whose responsibility is it to determine what sub is called on what day?
That would be my office and the Superintendent's office. We have a secretary in charge of that.
What determines the principal request?
I'm sorry, what determines who's called first? Is it the number of credits, the... like, are there subs who were there last year?
We have the absences through the teacher or teacher assistants call out. Plus, we have, you know, field trips, you know, professional days, leaves. So we keep a record of all of that, and then the substitute teachers start calling in. So they call out, secretary, to who is available, what position is available. Then that relationship is built. We know from the principals, you know, who they request and who they want, and what departments that person works out best. We have some people who really only want to do phys ed. We have some people who want to do art and special needs. You know, it depends where that person fits best.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Probably some of them were also done... I'm sorry, but some were just done by, like, Dr. McGinn mentioned, that principal request or vice principal request. I know when I was out, too, like, there were certain people that you'd say, well, I know if so-and-so's out for a couple of days, this person knows math or end of students, that'd be a great fix.
Well, that's why I'm asking the question. Like, we still have a sub pool from last year, and there... I'm sure there are wonderful subs who are available. Is there a hierarchy of who you call in based upon the experience of something that they might have done last year? And that person's a very good sub. Or, conversely, we're not going to call that person back.
Trustee, if they call in, they're pretty much going to work every single day. Now, we do have some people who only want to work elementary, who specialize in early childhood, or some who only like the high school, you know, as regular teachers do. But what happens is many of our substitute teachers, they go on and become teachers, or get other jobs, or go back to school. So we're constantly losing, so that's... it's a process that's ongoing. Every month, we're hiring and doing more orientations to bring more people in, so we always have a substitute teacher when the teachers haven't.
So it's not just the 60 credits to determine whether or not they call in? Usually, we're looking, are those... is this person going towards an education major?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lopez, why don't you describe what you do when you have them in once a month, the substitutes?
So we have a teacher... substitute teacher orientation once a month before they start to go over all the policy procedures, our expectations, rules, you know, that need to be followed. They're not rules that they might learn in college. Some of them are education majors, but we want them to know the rules and policies and procedures of everything on Board of Ed, and our expectations, and what is different from the elementary, and what is different at the high school, and what things they can expect. And they always come with great questions. You know, so if they're going down to Mary J, what's the difference, you know, Mary J's lineup than at Midtown in Washington? Because all of our schools are different, so, you know... You know, my experience working in so many different schools and knowing them, I can give them a heads up of what they're going to be on their first day.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Resolution 43 and 44 doesn't have a dollar value to it. How does that work?
So when you call in, when you read it, you call in and ask us for your... Doesn't have a what? I didn't hear you question. Dollar amount.
And then, which... let's go back.
Forty-two, forty-three.
Forty-three, forty-four.
Oh, it's a tiny tots.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Because most of them did.
This resolution, tiny tots therapy, had a fee schedule for the full calendar year. And that's why it's not written in the first... like, most of them are $90 an hour. This is based on a total fee schedule depending on the services. So that's why it's not on that front page. It's included in the documentation.
Do you pay a retainer fee for all of these people?
Was it billed for time?
For time, or retain, I'm going to...
Retained, no.
They're billed, they bill...
They're billed for their time.
I believe.
Same with the individual people, yeah?
But, Trustee, and I know it's in here somewhere, maybe a trustee could help me. We had a resolution where if it was a missed doctor's appointment, you know, the district did have to pay for that, even though a parent didn't bring the child. And that's 43. I'll take a look at 44.
It's the same.
It's tiny tots, it's the same thing. It's all based on a 2017-18 fee schedule with different categories to it. I can make copies if you'd like. I'm going to go back to number 81. Annually, we submit a security drill statement of assurance. I could do this... you know, one fire drill, one school security drill each month. And then annually, we hold a minimum of two of each of the following: active shooter, evacuation, evacuation, non-fire, bomb threat, lockdown. So we submit this every year to the Hudson County Superintendent. So that's a new resolution from last week. A few more placements, 82, East Mountain School. We have one student, start date July 5th. Eighty-three, Essex Valley, student, one student, July 3rd start. And then the final resolution on the consent. I'm sorry that we didn't sign yet, is 84. Saroval Paulsy, Jardine, two students, July 6th. All right, so consent agenda, moved by Vice President Willbeck, seconded by Trustee Cruden. Then we had a series of other resolutions on non-consent, starting with the commendations. Ninety-seven was the preschool plan that was moved by Trustee Cruden, seconded by Trustee Broderick. Ninety-eight was the contract to Hoboken High School that was moved by Trustee Garillic, seconded by Trustee Desmond. Ninety-nine was moved by President Broderick. Uh, no, that's why we moved it to non-consent.
Oh, okay, I can't...
Yeah, that's why I put it there. Ninety-nine was President Broderick, Vice President Willbeck. So give everyone a chance to take a look at Resolution 100. We didn't sign that last week. It was the Extended School Year, number 100, resolution, and two pages of background. I guess I should... Mitch? Yeah, all right. Trustee, 100 will do inside. I'll give you the signatures. 101 was Trustee Garillic, Trustee Cruden. Resolution 102 was Trustee Cruden, Trustee Desmond. 103 was Trustee Cruden, Trustee Garillic. 104 was Trustee Garillic, Trustee Cruden. 105 will do inside. 106 is Trustee Garillic, Trustee Cruden.
Dr. May, before we go any further, I know there was questions about this resolution and the costs as far as this program was concerned. I think, Mr. Smith, you have a report on that?
Yes, today, because through fundraising and other concentrated efforts from the band parents, Mr. Craig gave us a check for $8,700 to cover the majority of the cost of this. This is in addition to the tuitions being charged. I believe there are some 40 students involved in this summer playhouse, and they're putting on Snow White, I believe?
Beauty and the Beast.
Beauty and the Beast. I knew it was one of those. Yeah, Beauty and the Beast. So we're happy about that. So the program is basically self-funded.
That was just one thing we wanted to confirm, that it's totally going to cover musicians, costuming, right to the place? It's not going to cost this Board of Education any money?
No.
It's going to be totally funded by the students who attend?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
And the production is the third week in July.
Okay, so 106 was Trustee Garillic, Trustee Cruden. 107 is in for inside, that's the residents we're hearing. 108, credit recovery, was Trustee Cruden, Trustee Willbeck. Interlocal agreement, 109, President Broderick, Vice President Willbeck. And 110, custodial, was Trustee Desmond, Vice President Willbeck. Okay, so that's all I have for out here. The rest is for inside. Superintendent?
Yes, I did have a a long agenda last week explaining all of the end-of-year programs. I would just like to add two additional programs that are in process right now. Our Bayonne High School students are traveling. They're in Miami right now on layover, and they're waiting for the next flight to take them to Ecuador on their trip to Galapagos Island. And that's with Mr. Cusiola and Ms. Namas, correct, Dr. Namas? Right. And we heard from them, and they're fine. They're in Miami, as I mentioned. And we will be getting a call when they land around 10 o'clock tonight in Ecuador. Also, the... we have a wonderful program going on. It's housed up at Woodrow Wilson, but it's open to all children in the district. It's called our Summer Environmental Program. And we have about 25 students in it, and they've been having the time of their life being involved with going to a thatchery. And after that, they're going to... they were at today, I believe they were with the keeper, the Riverkeeper, and they were on a boat, and they were traveling around with Mrs. Trent. And also, we have our teacher back there sitting right in the audience today, and she's been doing this for quite a long time. It's been a very, very big success. And the students really, really love it. Pictures are great. Thank you very much, Angela. Very nice program. Thank you. Excuse me?
That was from Miss Trent.
Uh, Miss Trent? Uh, Miss Trenton, she took the pictures. Yeah, but you're, yeah, but you're involved with the program too, correct? Yes, very nice. Wonderful program. They sell out almost immediately. They charge a hundred and fifty dollars for students to be involved in it, and it's really a wonderful program. So, that's all I have. Dr. Dagnos, anything for you to add, credit recovery report?
Credit recovery last year, we had one hundred and twenty-three students. Four days in, things are settling down now. There's one hundred and fifty-two students.
One hundred and how many?
Fifty-two, one fifty-two. And the other report, we're anxiously awaiting our allocation for our federal grants, Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV. Normally, we have that in mind, but I think we'll have to change over to ESSA. There is some holdup, and it will be a very wild process over the summer to get that grant placed.
You don't think it's because of Betsy Devol?
Uh, I do.
A hundred and fifty-two students in credit recovery, what is the num, do you know last year, is that a, from last year, was that a increase or a decrease or...
Yeah, she was one twenty-three.
One twenty-three last year.
One twenty-three, they did, okay. No, no, I didn't, you just said that now?
Yes.
Oh, I was...
I just have a hundred and fifty-two.
You know, I apologize.
Play the tape.
Doctor McGee, what was the total graduates that went into the military last year versus this year?
Well, we had about twenty-four. This year, we only had eight.
Thank you.
Trustees, I'm just, I'm going to get number nineteen re-signed, the CD James, every day. That was all summer program now with E S Y.
Mr. Lopez, you ready?
Only items for inside, Doctor McGee.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, as you can see, Matt is not with us. He's on a planned vacation that he planned prior to starting his employment with us. But we're busy closing out grants. We're getting ready to step into the next fiscal year, July one. We're closing out grants. We're finalizing our extraordinary aid, and we'll hopefully, we have that by mid-July. We're looking at all miscellaneous revenues coming in, semi-solar revenues, rental fees. And additionally, we want to make sure that all our bills are paid for the month of June. For the month of May, we ended available balance of a little over two point three eight million dollars, which is very good. We're on course to, optimistically, when we do the CAFRA, Matt and I had a discussion prior to him leaving with Laura Z in my office, and because of the concentrated effort of central office and new members of the Board of Education, we are quite optimistic that we will be out of the deficit situation by September first, once we finalize our fiscal two seventeen. So it's been a long nightmare-ish road, but we are, we are working on it, and we're getting to where we need to be. Thanks to everybody in this room. So I have that to report. Thank you.
Does that include the four million dollar loan for the books?
That's part of the seventeen budget. The budget for seventeen, seventeen eighteen is a balanced budget, which will allow us to do the many things that the Board needs to do.
Yeah, but I'm saying...
And that is, that is in there. Now, with that said, we're hopeful that Trenton comes up with, they said we might be getting three point two million dollars in additional revenue. If that comes to fruition, then you, as a Board, will have to make a determination. Do we take the book loan deal with the three point two million? Or do we just take the three point two and put the book loan deal on the back burner and move forward? So it's a discussion that we'll need to have in mind. It's a discussion I'm frankly looking forward to. It would be nice to get an additional three point two million dollars, and that would, Mitch, correct me if I'm wrong, that would be every year, right? That would be...
Well, it could change from year to year.
Right, but...
Now, it's an increase that it shouldn't be decreased, not here, but you can't tell.
That would not be a one-time...
We don't know that, yeah.
I'm telling you.
It's not a one-time, what was that?
Yeah, so we're, I'm hopeful to call you next week and say, you know, over this, they settled on something, and we're going to see that money immediately. And Dr. McG, under Dr. McGee, we went down to Trenton with President Broderick, and we went and spoke at assembly hearings and senate hearings, and talked to anybody and anybody who would listen. And, you know, maybe after ten, fifteen years, our message was finally heard, that we are severely underfunded, and we're getting funding, funding that is due to the students, the staff, and the citizens of Bayonne. So hopefully, I'll call you over the weekend and say, "We got it." So that would be nice.
I would just like to caution everyone, they actually have to vote on this.
Yeah.
They've already missed at least two opportunities to do that deliberately. They have now delayed it. It'll be a big surprise if it happens.
And not only do they have to vote, but Governor Christie has to sign off on it.
Then approve it.
And approve it.
This is a long, arduous road.
We agree Governor Christie hasn't been the biggest fan of education, to expect that money to come so freely. Just to put it out there.
Simple question. Mr. Smith, with regard to the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen budget, has a potential raise for teachers been included in that?
I think that's for executive session.
That's for... I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
But the budget that we have right now, you're including the four million dollar loan in it, right, or no?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, it is. I just want to add a little bit to the, to the campaign that we conducted with... I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead. I, I just wanted to add to the information that Mr. Smith gave you, about the campaign that we conducted with all of our teachers. And, you know, so many of our students would save our schools. And we tweeted to Trenton, I think, one day, the governor received, what was it, four thousand?
About four thousand eight hundred tweets.
Yeah, four thousand eight hundred tweets, "Save our schools, Bayonne," you know, number one. And we think that that certainly made an impact on the entire process. Plus, all of our teachers were working very hard on it, and there were many letters that were sent to Trenton, not only to Governor Christie, but to all the legislators. And I know that Mr. D'Angelo had asked the teachers to get involved and write letters to the legislators. So I know, I think, it was just a combined effort on everyone's part with being involved with this. And I sent you home all the information on everything that we had done, you know, as far as this, you know, initiative was, and I'm very proud of where we are with it. We certainly have given the message that Bayonne kids count too. And I've been actually singing that song, oh, I don't know, for many, many, many years, ten, twelve, fifteen years, about what we needed done here in Bayonne. So I think we should be proud.
Was there any response from anyone in Trenton regarding this huge Twitter campaign? Anybody respond in any way?
Not to my knowledge, no. In fact, I had even sent Governor Christie three emails, plus made several phone calls, spoke to everybody in his office. And at first, it was, "Well, they're considering it," then it was, "Well, not at this time." So that was the final time that we had the, you know, we reached out to him. So we decided to get involved with the Twitter approach. We thought the president won the election that way. Why shouldn't we try to do social media with it and let everyone know that we're here? You know, we're a peninsula here, and it's, it's hard to get here. As we all know, it's hard to get here, and once you're here, it's hard to get out. So people, you know, kind of forget who we are. And we just wanted everyone to know who we are, and that we have kids, and our kids could, should count too, just as well as all the other kids in the state of New Jersey.
I know several trustees at this table joined in on that campaign, and we sent our, you know, our messages to Trenton as well. Did any of our local officials join that? Did Mayor Davis or any of our Assembly people tweet out on our behalf?
Dr. Dagnos, tweet.
Like, were they, were they, were they active in this campaign, our Assembly people?
I wouldn't be aware of that.
I was, I'm not aware of that either.
We did share everything that we did with everybody.
Okay.
If I could say, I just would, I would, if I was a betting man, I'd probably say that I doubt if anybody in Trenton heard more from anyone else in the state than Dr. McGee. I will say, I'm sure, and that goes over a long time. And she probably started that right after she had the bridge built on by Lincoln School.
That's true. It was a long time ago. Thank you.
I have one more question. You don't want to answer? All right. How would our books be balanced if we took into four million dollar loan? That's what I'm trying to say, the same.
Well, we would pay it off over five years, a five-year payout, of approximately eight hundred thousand dollars a year. That's built into the budget.
Okay.
So we would realize that also.
So every year, we would be behind eight hundred thousand dollars?
Until we paid it off. It's like a home improvement loan, almost. You're borrowing against an asset, and it is the only asset that the state allows Boards of Education to borrow against on textbooks.
But it is low interest as well, isn't it, Mr. Smith?
Well, the Board at BCB Bank, where we're doing our banking, the same bank that gave us our loan in Lewis State Aid, because the state holds back the June State Aid payments, they came in at two percent on that. Now, we don't pay that. The state pays that to the bank directly, that interest. So we're hoping that they come up with a very, very competitive low rate, and we'll go for that. I believe they're meeting mid, next week, in the middle of the week, and hopefully, we will have that number. So we're optimistic that it is a, a low rate.
And how would we pay eight hundred thousand extra every year?
It's built into the budget. We built it into the budget.
Eight hundred thousand is built into the budget every year?
Yes, to pay that back, yes.
Mr. Smith, my understanding of the book deal was the first year, with a two thousand seventeen, eighteen year, there would...
Would be the following year.
It would be the following year.
Right.
So it's not in this year's budget?
It's not in this year, it's in next year.
Right, just to correct it.
I stay corrected, sorry. Yeah, and if we do get, if everybody, everything falls into place, hopefully, we, we don't need that. But that would be very optimistic at best.
Hopefully, yes.
I believe that's...
And I understand the terms and conditions of the loan, that should the state money materialize, and we decide to pay it off earlier, there's no prepayment penalty for the loan. Isn't that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, why don't you explain to the Board too that this is really probably only the one initiatives that the state allows?
Yeah, it is by law the only way that Boards can borrow. Bayonne did it probably about twelve or thirteen years ago. They did it in the folder that I gave everybody. It listed the districts that have done it in the past. North Bergen, very recently. City of Newark did a ten million dollar book buyback. And so it has been done throughout the state. Yes, so someone said, "Would they take the books if we miss a payment?" No, the books will never leave, will never leave the school district.
Boy, you just made some kids sad.
Yeah.
Is there, is there any update on another vote for this money from Trenton?
They're meeting again tomorrow. They'll be there all day. They got, you know, they might try to pass the budget, just... It has to do with the Horizon issue that Chris Christine's...
Yeah, they want to take three hundred...
That's what's holding it up. And it's a big issue.
And I don't, that's why I'm not all that optimistic just yet.
So we shall see.
So we'll adjourn to a closed session for legal personnel negotiation items. We will return to the public meeting. It is six fifty-six.